Good evening. At this time, I am calling to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, Village of Bartlett, Counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane at 7:00 or 8:00 P. M. Please call the roll.
Mike Wearden. George Cozio.
Here.
Tom Floyd.
Bob Ucaro.
Here.
Patty Hansen.
Here.
Robert Carney.
Here.
Linda Hansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
At this time, we need to approve the minutes of the meet of the meeting dated July 11th, 2013.
I make a motion to approve the zoning board of appeal minutes from July 11th, 2013.
I second.
Motion made by Patty and second by Linda. Please call the roll.
Patty Hansen.
Yes.
Linda Hansen.
Yes.
Robert Carney.
Yes.
Bob Ucaro.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
The first item on the agenda is case number 13-08, The Walgreens Appeal. Are the petitioners present?
Yes.
Do we have evidence of the mailings, pictures of signs, and a copy of the notice in the newspapers?
Yes, we do.
Please mark those exhibits A, B, and C.
We also have, on your dais, you received a list of consultants. We'd like to add that as Exhibit D.
Thank you.
The petitioner's consultants, the list. And then, we also have, and it was on the dais for you, an email from a neighboring property owner in support of the project, and we'd like to have that as Exhibit E.
Again, thank you. Will the petitioners please come to the podium to present your case?
Good evening.
Please raise your right hand.
Certainly.
Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence and testimony that you are about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Heimberg. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Brady and Jensen at 2425 Royal Boulevard in Elgin, 60123.
At this time, please present your case.
Thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bartlett Venture One LLC, which is the owner of the property at the northeast corner of Sterns and Route 59, and they're the proposed developer of The Walgreens project. As Roberta indicated, we have a list of the consultants who are part of the development team that are here tonight to answer any questions in their areas of expertise that you might bring up. First of all, feel free to interrupt me at any time during our presentation. It's easier to straighten out misconceptions or misunderstandings while the subject matter is current rather than waiting till the end. So unless that's contrary to your normal method of operation, I'd rather have it do that way, okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
Thanks. As I indicated, the property in question is at the northeast corner of Route 59 in Sterns. And here we have a aerial photo of that intersection. This is the northeast intersection corner. This is a very prominent intersection, perhaps the most prominent intersection on the west portion of the village. It provides a first impression to visitors to the village. Just to get us oriented, this is the McDonald's property right here. This is Norwood Lane here, Kinder Care, the Brewster Creek Shopping Center, and the property in question is here in the corner, right here. There are two main entrances off Norwood, one main entrance off of Route 59, and a main entrance off of Sterns Road. In addition, there's a right-in, right-out approximately this location, which is the north boundary of the property in question. Now, if you can go to the next, I'd like the one with the blue and the red. Here we are. Unfortunately, this is oriented not to the, to the north, is this way. This is the property in question right here. The gray area are the drive-aisles of the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. This is the property that's consisting of two separate parcels. The first parcel, which is owned by the petitioner, is a portion of the parking lot of the Brewster Creek Shopping Center, a little-used portion. The red line here is the property line between the two parcels. The second parcel is this corner parcel, which is a former Clark gas station. The corner station was originally owned by BP Amico, and in 2004, when they sold the property to an investor, they put on it a restriction that says certain things can't be constructed on this property, one of which is a convenience store. And the way the economy has evolved and business practices have evolved, a Walgreens store is considered a convenience store because of the vast variety of merchandise that they sell. So right away, it says no convenience store on this corner. Now, last summer, when we were negotiating the purchase of this corner parcel, we were able to get BP Amico to agree that a parking lot for a convenience store can be built on that corner. So that's important to realize, that we're limited to this area right here for the building. You need to keep in mind that the building has to stay north of that line, and you also have to keep in mind that the property is what it is. It can't grow because of the constraints of the drive-aisles of the shopping center. So again, its size is what it is. As I stated earlier, this is a very prominent intersection. It's a focal point on the west side of the village. Here is a, it's very difficult to see, unfortunately. This is the corner, this lot right here, facing east. There are two curb cuts that are existing from the original gas station. And in another photo, we'll show you a third curb cut. Let's wait for a second.
I can pass the photos.
Okay, that might be help, might be helpful. She'll pass these photos around. These are awfully dark. If you can look right over here, you can see the existing Walgreens store, which has been operating in the Brewster Creek Shopping Center since 1989. And if the photo were clearer, you would see cars parked up against the south boundary, where you would normally expect a drive-thru to be. The fact is, there's no drive-thru on, for the Walgreens store in that shopping center. If you can flip to the next. Here is a curb cut that exists from the original gas station that's on Sterns Road. You can see how close it is to the corner. The fact is, these three curb cuts are grandfathered. They could be used by somebody. The fact is that this project that we're proposing tonight for the new Walgreens store is going to abandon those. They're considered unsafe. All of the, all of the access to the new Walgreens store will be internal from the drive-aisles of the shopping center. So there'll be no direct access to either Sterns or Route 59.
So the curb cuts would not exist in the future plan?
It'll be gone.
Thank you.
Walgreens has operated in the Brewster Creek Shopping Center since 1989. Again, I pointed out earlier, the parking along the south boundary line, that's where you would expect to see a drive-thru for a modern drugstore. Walgreens would like to continue to operate in this quadrant of this prominent intersection, but its corporate strategy is to operate out of a freestanding building with a drive-thru facility. And that's the purpose of the proposed project for the new building. Now, if you'll keep, keep in mind what these pictures show, if you'll flip to the next, I'd like the, there we are. This is what it could look like on that corner. Artist rendering, of course, but it's a significant improvement of the aesthetics in this northeast corner of the intersection. Assuming successful conclusion of the village entitlement process, not only would the aesthetics be approved, but the dangerous curb cuts would be eliminated, and this longtime first-class business would be allowed to remain in the village in its nearly identical location where it's operated for 24 years. That's a major advantage for the village and the citizens. Now, Walgreens, like many national companies, has developed a standard building for its operation, and this is the footprint of that standard building on the subject property. If you could flip to the site plan. Okay, this is the site plan. This is the parking lot. This is the building itself. There is a main entrance at this point off of, this is Sterns and this is 59. There is a right-out only at this point, and an exit at this point from the drive-thru facility. The drive-thru has room for a stacking of up to six cars, and it has a bypass lane so that if, for some reason, somebody wanted to exit to the north, they could do that there. The parking lot is a dual-lane traffic, meaning traffic can go either direction. Over here is the right-in, right-out that's going to be reconfigured to current IDOT standards. IDOT is in charge of Route 59, so this will be reconfigured. This is where the smaller trucks delivering material to Walgreens store will come in. They'll come in here, they'll drive in, and then they'll back up to the point where they can unload. The larger trucks would undoubtedly, if they had semis or anything like that, which generally, they can control the time of their arrival to be during the night, so that won't cause any interference with the average person's traffic movement. Note that the building is entirely north of the line, the south line of the north parcel, as I indicated earlier, to keep in line with the approval that we received from the Amico BP people for the construction of the parking lot on this site. And it's due to the configuration of the standard building that Walgreens uses and the constraints of the subject property, that certain variations from your code are required, and of course, that's the purpose of this hearing tonight. There are three variations that relate to parking. First, the ordinance requires 56 spaces, and we're providing 84 percent of that, or 47. Walgreens indicates that 20 percent of its prescription business is done via the drive-thru, which significantly reduces the amount of parking required. So the typical amount of parking may not be needed because they will have this drive-thru. Again, the drive-thru allows for stacking up to six cars, which would, those cars would otherwise be looking for parking places in the parking lot. So we think that the shortage of nine spaces from your ordinance will be a non-event. Number two, we're requesting a reduction of the ordinance required, 180-foot square-foot parking stalls down to 162 square feet. That recognizes the reduced size of cars these days. I understand that most of the new construction over the past years in the village have been granted the 162 square-foot parking stalls, and in fact, I understand that your ordinance is being reviewed to actually reduce the requirement from 180 to the 162. The parking lot also encroaches into the 50-foot setback that runs along both Sterns and Route 59. And again, the, this type of encroachment situation is fairly standard along these major roads. The building itself encroaches by 34 feet into that 50-foot setback. The building encroaches by 1.4 feet into the 30-foot setback along the rear line. Of course, that's because we can't move at 1.4 feet south because of the restriction placed by BP Amico. The canopies on the building, there will be canopies at this point around the corner over the main door, and a canopy over the drive-thru window. They encroach 7.9 feet and five feet into the required side yards, the larger one, I believe, being on the drive-thru end. Of course, these canopies are over 20 feet in the air. My understanding is that the BP Amico station across the street encroaches 12 feet with its canopy into its side yard, and that the mobile station on Sterns, four feet into its side yard. So that's happened before. There is a 20-foot landscaping setback at this point, and interior parkway setback, and 8.5 feet of that is encroached by the parking lot and 7.7 feet along Route 59. So that is a discussion of the whole situation. In summary, we can say that the advantages to the village of the approval of the new Walgreens store are, number one, the improvement of the aesthetics of the intersection by having a modern store constructed in the area instead of the abandoned parking lot with the barricaded curb cuts. And secondly, the elimination of those unsafe curb cuts that are, again, grandfathered and could be used by somebody who wanted to build on that site. Number three, it would, there'd be an improvement of the quality of life of the Walgreens customers in the village by providing a drive-thru alternative and picking up prescriptions. It's not currently there. Obviously, there'd be an increase in the real estate taxes generated by the property, and clearly, an increase in the sales taxes generated by Walgreens, which is increasing its store size and operating expenses in expectation of doing more business. And lastly, and perhaps equally important to the rest of them, this guarantees the continued existence in the village of this first-class business operation, which has signed a lease that has the potential of going up 75 years. So there won't be any of us here to call me a liar. I believe it's, I believe everything that exists supports your ability to come to the conclusion of the findings of fact that you're required to come up with as are printed in the staff's report. If there are any questions of me, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, we look forward to answering any questions that the consultants might have.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question to staff. Are there any examples in the village, particularly along Route 59, for a building being this close to the road?
Not a building, not this close, no. But parking, yes.
Is this a typical setback or a common setback that other towns, other buildings, companies have?
We've allowed a setback in other developments, but not along this particular route right here, along 59.
Question. If you go south on 59 towards Struckman Boulevard, where the big concrete-
Sound walls.
Walls are, how far of a setback off the road, do you know?
Well, those are most likely in the right-of-way since they're, they were installed by IDOT. So those are in the right-of-way.
So they could be within the same-
Oh, they're closer.
They're closer than what this-
Yes. This is, this is on private property, and this would still be setback, Bud, what was the number? It would be-
34 feet.
34 feet?
The building.
No.
Third.
It's being redu, it'd be 12-
16.
16. Those sound walls are much closer.
They're much closer?
Yes. They're in the right-of-way.
Than what this building would be?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, there are two things that I failed to mention that might be irrelevant. First of all, we've, we've given up four feet of our property so that a eight-foot bicycle path can be built along the south boundary, which is the Sterns Road property. So that tended to move us, move our parking lot. And secondly, the corner site was a, considered by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency as a blighted, contaminated site. And just this summer, a no further remediation letter was issued by the EPA, which restricts the type of activity that can go on on this property, and specifies specific construction methodology to prevent any transmission of any currently existing environmental problems to other properties, so.
Are the tanks from the old Clark station still underground?
I'm not, no, they're gone.
Okay.
How long has that been vacant, Roberta, do you know?
I thought we estimated eight years, something.
I couldn't, I don't know.
Ten, yeah.
I don't know.
Gotta be longer than that.
It could be. It's been a long time.
The fact that some of the ground was contaminated over the life of that gas station, is there any, is soil gonna have to be removed and taken off property, or is it considered safe because, in effect, you're capping it with the asphalt parking lot?
I'll let Wayne Rogers answer that question.
There is one small area, small area on the southwest corner that will be excavated completely, and clay material replaced in that area. The other property will all have the barrier of asphalt put in or landscaping material to seal the property.
I'm sorry, would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Wayne Rogers. I'm with the Bartlett Ventures One.
There was a comment about delivery trucks, and you said small trucks. I can see how that would be able to make that turn in. How would a larger semi make the delivery in this situation?
I'm sorry, I could not hear your question.
I said, I could understand from your description how a smaller truck making a delivery would be able to fit in that area. I don't, I don't see, I don't understand how a full-size semi would be able to-
A full-size semi will, will not try that.
Oh, okay.
They'll, they'll, they'll be over in here during, during night. I understand that they can control when those semis arrive, and they'll, they'll unload using the parking lot of the, of the shopping center and cart their material into the building.
Mr. Heimberg, what are the anticipated hours of operation for this Walgreens?
It'll be a 24-hour store.
It'll be a 24-hour store.
Regarding parking, you made a comment that the stalls, the size, have been reduced. Can you restate that and why the reduction?
Well, number one, the stalls have been reduced to an, I believe it's eight by nine-
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen size rather than what the ordinance currently allows, which was adopted back when cars were bigger. And so the, the current size of 162 square feet, what we're asking for is, in, in keeping with modern practices, and as I indicated, the village is considering an amendment of its ordinance to, to call that the required size.
Mr. Heimberg, how many, does it, it appears there's only two handicap parking spots. Is that correct?
I believe that's right.
Okay.
The new store, I'm sure, I didn't mention, is 14,820 square feet compared to the existing eight, 13,000 in the, in the shopping centers.
Another question. Does Walgreens currently own or lease the building that they're currently in?
They lease.
They lease?
Yeah. Now, we, we have, we have a, a tight-rope agreement so that the minute that they open in their new building, the lease on the old building is over. So they'll continue to operate there through the full construction and through the, through the stocking of the new store.
And what do you, what's your anticipate, anticipated opening date if this were to go through and be approved? What is the, what's the construction time?
They're anticipating March of '14.
Thank you.
I think construction might start almost immediately after final approval.
Okay.
This is a question to staff. What is the, the current size of a parking space versus what the new size is being considered at?
Our ordinance requires 180 square feet, and typically, that would be a nine by 20. Most of the parking stalls that we see on site plans are nine by 18. Home Depot has nine by 18, the Park District has nine by 18, the Village Hall has nine by 18.
I'm happier with that statement because it's two feet off of the length and nothing off of the width.
Right.
That's a big concern for me. I just-
We will keep the width the same.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions on the traffic report. We, we received the entire report on page 16, when it describes the capacity analysis. This is table four. Could you explain what the background traffic only means? Is that without the store?
I'll introduce Javier Miller, the traffic consultant, who can walk you through those questions.
Good evening. My name is Javier Milan. I'm a senior consultant with KLOA Incorporated, and we conducted the traffic study. Your answer to your question is correct. Background means existing traffic volumes increased by the percentage, and I would have to look in here, to take into account growth in the area, but not including Walgreens. And I'll, I'll let you know what that growth factor is in a second. If you bear with me, I'll, I'll find it. It's a growth factor of 3 percent, so-
Projected over what time?
That's half a percent per year, which is typical what have been seen in adjacent areas, as how it's growing. Certainly, that's due to the economic times, you know, when it was really nice, let's say five, six years ago, it was much more than that. But we have seen this through data collection from CMEP. That's a Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, and it's been repeating through all the communities. It's about half a percent of growth, and that's what we apply.
Okay, then, one other question. Within the report, it states that consideration was given to the existing store and the traffic that that would have, if I understand that correctly. So once Walgreens moves out of the existing store, that space occupied by another tenant was still taken into consideration for traffic in the area?
Correct. It is just a relocation of a Walgreens, so it's really not new generation. Walgreens is already there. But to be pretty conservative or realistic analysis, all of the traffic that Walgreens would generate- would generate was assumed to be new, because when they move from where they are, somebody can occupy that square footage. So we never reduce the traffic, we just left it there and on top of that, we added Walgreens again. And that takes into account what you're saying, that if somebody comes in not knowing who it might be, the traffic is already there.
Okay, thank you.
Question to staff about the number of parking spaces. If I heard it right, the normal requirement for this would have been 56 spaces and it's being approved or proposed at 47?
That's correct.
Why do you think that's adequate?
I think the petitioner should address that question.
Oh, okay. What, then, can I redirect the question to the petitioner, please?
Well, we've asked Walgreens what their typical parking at a peak time might be and they said it's not possible to compute that because every store is different and every peak time is different. However, we feel that the existing store does not generate 47 cars at a particular time and the drive-through will take 20% of their business and eliminate the need for those cars to park. Plus, there's, as I said, there's six stacking spaces available along the side of the building in the drive-through lane without blocking the pass-through lane. So it's our feeling that the 56 was more than they would possibly ever use, plus their business is changing to the point where they'll be using less of the parking due to the drive-through.
Thank you, that seems reasonable.
Pardon me?
I said, "thank you" and "that seems reasonable," I understand it better.
Mr. Heimberg, a question. On the lighting, I don't know if you can tell, on my one here that's Lot 1 site plan, it's showing like one light on 59, one light on Stearns Road, and then two lights in the parking lot? Is that?
There are two lights in the parking lot, one on that island.
Okay.
And then east of that, there's another island with another light.
Okay, and then?
If you come up?
The one on Stearns there, right?
On the Stearns, right.
And the one on 59?
Correct. Also, you have a light on the east side of the driveway coming in from Brewster Creek, just to the north of the exit for the daycare. There's another pole there.
And will there be lighting along the drive-through area also?
Yes, and on the building itself.
And on the building as it's being built?
Correct.
If there are no further comments from the board, we will open this to the public for any comments. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak on this matter, if so, please come to the microphone at the podium and make your comments. Please fill out the speaker request form found at the podium after you have spoken. Please clearly state your name and address for the record.
My name's Steve Rouse, I live in, on Braintree Lane, directly behind Brewster Creek. We have a couple of concerns, and I think the first concern is related to, we already touched on it a little bit, is the traffic. That area is already very, very congested. It's a nice-looking building, but people are just stuck there in gridlock trying to get onto 59 or back through there, or coming off of Braintree. Traffic is continuously backed up, rush hour is obviously the worst. My hopes before this proposal was that that corner may be used as a merge to get onto 59, to try to reduce some of that traffic. That doesn't seem like that'll happen once a structure of this type is put up there. We also talked about parking places. I think the proposed building site is also taking some of the existing parking from the existing Walgreens store, which, once that's occupied by someone, it looks like there's five or six parking places to the left of the existing store left. So I think there's gonna be an overall reduction once you consider another building in that small area. So, those are the points I wanted to bring up. Primarily, the, I was hoping to see some sort of independent traffic study that, I think I've seen it before, that that intersection in the Braintree and the Dominics exit was rated fairly poorly to start with. So, those are our concerns with that.
There is a detailed traffic study that was done. It does show a slight increase during the rush hour. I mean, obviously, you probably haven't had the opportunity to see it.
I live it.
And that's why I asked about the background traffic.
I think that's based on what averaged out 3% growth, but we have growth due to that, what is it, the Red Bridge opening, there's a lot of traffic coming in, you can really see it in the mornings and the evenings. So just besides normal economic growth, there's additional traffic due to the opening of those bridges over, I believe it's Elgin, where they're coming through on, through there. So it is a busy intersection. I hear my share of sirens for wrecks and stuff. I don't know the statistic on it, but there is a lot of activity going on in that area before this gets added. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Have they looked into a turn lane? Has it ever been considered in the past? Because, I mean, I've lived in Bartlett myself and I know that intersection's horrible and as a resident during peak hours, I go around that because it's a nightmare. And with the two bridges opening through South Elgin and St. Charles, it brings a large flux of traffic into our village, going to Elgin O'Hare and then coming back in the evening.
We've hired a traffic consultant to review this study and I'm gonna let Mr. Coulter, who's our traffic expert on this, answer that question. He's got a little insight into things and he reviewed this plan, so Brent, if you want to go up there.
Hello, my name's Brent Coulter, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Illinois and was retained by the village to review the Walgreens traffic study and site plan. I think some of your questions relate to the overall operation of the 59 Stearns Road intersection in terms of background traffic, what happens not even considering the proposal before you tonight. And the state does recognize that they have a need to make some improvements at that intersection, so they've programmed funds, federal dollars and some state dollars to address that. They've just started preliminary engineering to improve the capacity and the safety overall of the intersection of 59 and Stearns Road. So I can't stand before you right now and tell you exactly what their engineering is gonna come up with, that's what they've just started. But we do have kind of a preliminary scope of work, which would include, on a number of the approaches to the intersection, dual left turn lanes that would operate under protected-only phasing, meaning you make a left turn with an arrow and don't try and wait for a gap in traffic to get through. So that'll address some of the safety issues that currently exist at this intersection and some of the queuing that exists, particularly northbound and eastbound coming from the west on Stearns Road. The net effect is that there will be some improvement on all legs of the intersection with this overall intersection improvement, so. I think that's the easiest way to answer any concerns you might have about background traffic conditions. The applicant has already stated and their consulting engineer has stated, and I concur, that their own site analysis was conservative in the sense that they really assumed that they're adding another Walgreens on top of a Walgreens that's already there at that location. So it's a very conservative estimate of traffic added at this location. It's my experience, and I've been involved with a number of sites where a use has been relocated in close proximity to its existing site, or has been expanded on its existing site, either to add square footage or drive-through lanes or other conveniences or amenities for customers. And traffic volumes generated by the sites in those cases have stayed pretty much the same. So I think we're really, that's really the crux of the issue in terms of site development is that we're relocating the Walgreens to a new location to better serve their customers. And really, the difference between the existing and the new is gonna be almost imperceptible in terms of traffic on Stearns Road or Route 59. So, I think the positive news is that IDOT is looking at this intersection. They have money programmed, nearly $2 million, and there is actually more money down the road that may be available for the improvement depending on what the scope of work is that they come up with. But the village as a whole will be seeing those plans on a preliminary basis, probably within the next year or so.
My question isn't directly related to this, but just to get a better understanding for what's happening at that intersection. It's my understanding that westbound Stearns will get an additional left turn lane, or I'm sorry, eastbound Stearns coming from the west, will get an additional left turn lane to be able to take two lanes of traffic north onto 59. Is anything being done at any of the other points of this intersection, example, eastbound?
Yeah.
Or westbound Stearns?
The preliminary scope of work that IDOT used to secure some of the federal money that is already programmed for this intersection, assumed dual left turn lanes northbound on Route 59, southbound on Route 59, and eastbound on Route 59. The westbound left turn lane, the volume is such that with the other improvements, which affects the overall capacity of the intersection, a dual left turn lane may not be necessary on westbound Stearns. That's something they'll investigate in this preliminary engineering process that they recently started. There's also the possibility of a southbound right turn lane on Route 59 onto Stearns Road. So, that was a scope of work that they submitted in their application for federal dollars. Now they start the process of really getting into it and deciding, you know, if there will be dual lefts, how long they'll be, what other auxiliary lanes, like right turn lanes, will exist at the intersection and so on. So, it'll be a significant improvement to the intersection and will address, by design and using federal dollars, they're, at a minimum, will be looking at the year 2040 traffic volumes. So this will be an improvement that will last for many, many years, serving traffic in the area.
Is there any knowledge at this point, if there are dual turn lanes, that they will need to take some of the right-of-way in order to do that, particularly on 59?
Well, I think in terms of that scenario of the dual left turn lanes on Route 59, for example, we, it was my input to staff that there would be sufficient room within the existing right-of-way and the landscape yard that remains on the east side of 59, for example, to cover that type of improvement. And it's basically, because of the 16-foot median on Route 59 right now, they're basically looking at about seven to eight feet of widening on either side to accommodate the dual left turn lanes with the existing 16-foot median that they have. So they'll end up with a 30-foot median and they'll need about seven feet on each side of the roadway for that purpose. IDOT has also looked at the site plan and they looked at it in conjunction with the modifications the applicant indicated that they were gonna make to bring that right-in, right-out only access on Route 59 up to IDOT standards, current standards. So it's a bigger, it's a bigger channelizing island, it's a more generous curb returns and a wider entry width and exit egress width. So, IDOT has also had the opportunity to look at the site plan and comment on that issue. But as far as that goes, there does appear to be sufficient right-of-way for the purposes of this project as we know it right now.
So the new right turn in, right turnout might possibly speed traffic through that point better than it does today? I mean, because you have to slow down quite a bit to make that turn.
Yeah, there'll be some, those are 50-foot curb returns as you enter northbound from 59 into the driveway. So, the net effect of that and the size of the island and the width of the lane is that you get more deceleration occurring off the through lane of 59 and on the actual turning roadway into the site. And so that's an advantage of enhancing that driveway with IDOT's current design standards. It provides for some deceleration effect at that location.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board or from the public?
Hello, my name is Richard Lewis on 868 Braintree Lane. I currently live right behind the current Walgreens. You know, looking at that corner, certainly this would be a much nicer view than what we currently have, but I do have to question a little bit of whether we're trying to put something in there that just doesn't fit. I mean, I'd like to still fit in 32 jeans, but sometimes we have to be realistic that things aren't just gonna fit. The parking and traffic is a concern. The traffic along Braintree Lane has been a significant issue for, ever since I've lived there for years and years. Fortunately, we were able to get some sidewalks probably over 10 years ago now. But even at that time, the resident's solution was to close the Norwood Lane entrance, which as we understand it, was actually the original plan when this was all being built. But there's significant, significant traffic going through that area. And so as we add yet an additional building in here, obviously Walgreens has talked about a larger building, increased number of patrons visiting that building, something has to go into the old Walgreens. And, you know, there's some discussion about some other things going into the empty space there. That traffic is a major concern to all of us. The other part of it is, is kinda interesting listening to things about this traffic study and I think that was some of the concerns that were perhaps brought up is, if this is approved and at the same time IDOT is looking at perhaps what can they do with that intersection, do we start to kinda handcuff them or what their ability is to do? Because now that space has been taken if they need to come into a closer area from where the new Walgreens would be. The other concern, which I think is worth bringing up here and is probably part of the future discussion, is if the Walgreens goes in, what does go in to the old Walgreens store? And obviously, those that are, of us that live right behind that building would be extremely concerned about what kind of facility or business might go in there. And in presuming if this were approved, there's some things that I think we'd be concerned with in terms of some of the landscaping plans, the lighting that would be bleeding into the yards and things like that that are there. So, you know, if it were to be approved, certainly I think the landscaping areas would need to be burned and bermed high to prevent car headlights from passing through, reducing noise from both traffic going through there, but also through the drive-through window. I'm actually very familiar with a very similar setup in my parents', where my parents live, near Walgreens, and you can hear what's going on in the drive-through lane from a block away. So, that type of additional noise and things is coming through, trucks delivering and those types of things. So, certainly a lot of landscaping, berm landscaping, and perhaps some high tree So, certainly a lot of landscaping, berm landscaping, and perhaps some high trees of some sort, evergreens, of course, to block some of that light that would be, again, bleeding to the houses behind it. This doesn't show, but I know there's the daycare center just to the east, yeah, right in there. I think there's certainly some area there that, I guess that's a different property, but I don't know if there's the ability to put some trees along some of that right-of-way as well or behind the building or even in some of the homeowners' yards behind that to, again, prevent some of that lighting that is a real issue. There's currently an issue with the current building that's there. There's lighting. The top of the building is very, very unsightly with the air conditioning equipment and/or the screening that's been put up there that blows around in the wind like a flag. So, there's a lot of kind of issues about that. I guess the other thing that I would just, you know, like to mention, there's certainly other spaces in Bartlett where I'm sure Walgreens would be very successful, West Bartlett Road and 59. I know there's a lot of discussion about how do we pull traffic into the downtown area? And one of the issues that I very easily see is that West Bartlett and 59, there's a lot of trees, no one can even see down that way. Certainly be an excellent spot for a new business and something with high traffic like Walgreens. So, thank you.
Any further comments from the board? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to send a positive recommendation to the village board to allow for the variance of Walgreens.
Second.
Motion made by Linda Hansen and second by Patty Hansen for a positive recommendation to the board. Please call the roll.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
Patty Hansen?
Yes.
Bobo Caro?
Yes.
Robert Carney?
No.
George Cozio?
We are passing a positive recommendation to the board, to the staff. When will this case appear before the village board?
We believe it'll be on the 17th, Village Board Committee.
I'm sorry?
The 17th.
We'd like to thank you for your time and consideration.
So, to the petitioner, I'd say stay in touch with, would it be Sonia at this time or you, Roberta?
It's me.
Okay, stay in touch with Roberta for additional information. That's the last and only item on the agenda for tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Hold it. Any old business, new business?
We have, in terms of new business, you'll probably have a meeting next month, just so you mark your calendars and we'll remind our chairman that it starts at 7:00. And it will be, at this point, I think it's a text amendment only. We might have a variance. So, there will be a meeting next month.
If there is no further business for this meeting, I would entertain a motion.
Did you want to go over that last handout they got?
I'm sorry?
The email policy you gave them?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have it, but just, we did hand out the email policy that the village board adopted and the social media policy. I'd recommend reading that and if you have any questions, please contact me and I'll gladly put you in touch with our village attorney to interpret it. But just be careful. Emails that are of village business are subject to the Freedom of Information Act, whether they are generated on village emails or at home to village staff or other members of the zoning board. So, please read that and just be aware of that. It's a new policy that has been adopted by the village board and they're in place now.
Go ahead.
That's all I have. I think we're done?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion for adjournment by Patty and second by Robert. Roll release. Any objections? Meeting closed at 8:02 PM.